Good morning, everybody. It's 8:30. We'll call this morning's meeting to order. Our first item is the approval of the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carries. We'll move into the approval of bills and vouchers.
Move to approve the bills and vouchers.
Second.
By Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Kaylee. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carries. Approval of minutes from February 9th.
Move to approve the minutes.
Frank's busy this morning.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries. We'll move into our weekly COVID-19 public health director update. And once again, Kathy has brought Jamie with her. Good morning.
Good morning. Okay. We handed out the data for as of the 23rd. So you can see the cases are, you know, remaining pretty steady, the cumulative cases. So not much of an increase, both in Minnesota and in Clay County. Our death rate is still at 84, so that hasn't changed. A few more in Minnesota. And then the numbers of out of isolation correlate with the number of cases and deaths. Our active cases are at 51, so a few more than last week, but still really remaining low. And our case investigators and contact tracers are still working on those cases to follow up. They're taking those versus having the Minnesota contracted officials take those. Let's see. And then the age groups are still the same. Hospitalizations and people in ICU. We have a graph as well about that, but the numbers for hospitalizations are really remaining stable and those in ICU as well. So not much of an increase. That's across the state. And our 14-day case rate is really low. It's at 14.33. We haven't seen it that low in a long time. Last week it was 21.34. So that's really great, that 14-day case rate staying down. And of course, that's the rate we worked with, 12, as we followed that throughout this last year to help them make some decisions about what they were going to do as far as in-person and hybrid learning. So that number is really positive as we see it decline. The only changes with the case rates would be on the third page where you're seeing the county active cases. Now, of course, that'll change based on the number of cases and that will vary depending on who's coming out of isolation, which cases are active. So you see the age range has changed a little bit from last week. So we're seeing it's, you know, the 40 to 49 is kind of the highest range for active cases at this time. And then the 70 to 74 jumped up a bit too. So, and again, this graph is going to change based on the number of active cases every week that we have. Any questions? I went over those numbers pretty quickly. And then otherwise, I can have Jamie talk about the vaccine administration. Oh, one last thing. The vault testing site is still operational. And again, they're continuing to operate that we don't have any notification of any changes of that or when they would discontinue those testing. But we're seeing around 1,600 in the last few weeks that their numbers of tests that they're doing. Around a little over 1,000 are the Minnesota residents. We're getting around 500 to 600 of other individuals, mostly North Dakota residents. And the percentage of positivity rate has been low. 1.35 the week of February 7th, and then the week of February 14th, it's 3.44. So that's been low and stable. So that's good. And it's good to continue that testing site even though, you know, we were up in the 4,000 to 5,000 range, but because of the low numbers that we're seeing, that's why we're only seeing about 1,600 or so a week being tested. But it's still a valuable tool for us to have in Clay County.
Kathy, before you proceed, Commissioner Mojo has a question for you.
Kathy, I know that we had talked about billing for the vault testing site and that folks that went in would not necessarily be billed for that if they have insurance to make sure to present that and then they could work that through accordingly. My family tested in October for a variety of reasons and we're now getting some of the statements from our insurance on that. And so it's my understanding that they'll bill insurance and then that'll be covered. What are we telling people about? I mean, I don't want to detour people from doing that because it is quite an expensive, I think it's a $300 test.
Mm-hmm.
What are you hearing in regards to that?
You know, we, there was, we're telling people, and it's pretty clear that, and I can't remember if they have a sign up on that in that vault testing site, but that there is absolutely no out-of-pocket cost. So we're very clear about that. I think it's listed on our website as well. But that if there's an insurance plan, that they would enter their insurance and then they can bill the insurance. If insurance doesn't pay, there's no collection of any funding from an individual. If insurance pays, it just gives the additional funding to continue to run this site with all of the members that they need to continue the site on a regular basis. So they will bill insurance. Insurance may or may not pay, but there should be no bill to an individual. We did work with, there was a glitch with Blue Cross Blue Shield of North Dakota. And so I connected the individual that is, she called from Blue Cross Blue Shield of North Dakota wondering about the charges. So I connected them with the Minnesota Department of Health, folks that are working with the vault testing site. So they worked out a process for those individuals that are in Blue Cross Blue Shield of North Dakota. So what we're telling people, and they will, we've gotten a few calls, and you might notice on your insurance, but you should never receive a bail. Vault will not bail you. So there should never be a bail and you shouldn't be paying anything at all. So hopefully that's been pretty clear on our site, on our website.
Thank you.
I just got billed for the administration of the vaccine. Not for the vaccine, but for, excuse me, $57 for the administration of the, you said you had over 300.
I specifically was talking about the vault saliva test. Is that what you're?
Oh, no. I'm talking about administration of the shots.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
Yeah, and I know providers, where they're able to bill an administration fee if they choose to. That's an optional thing. Of course, we are not charging an administration fee through public health, but some clinics would be maybe charging an administration fee. They have the option to do that if they choose to.
And just a follow-up. I realize that these tests and administration cost money. So I, it's not my intent to say that they're overcharging whether they are or not. I just think it's important for the public to know that they may receive these statements if they did supply their insurance card information, but that they won't be on the hook for it going forward.
Correct, yes. Thanks for clarifying that for the public. That's very good.
Okay. Okay. So looking at the vaccine administration and distribution data that we got as of February 20th, Clay County, the total number of people with at least one dose is at 7,940. And Minnesota-wide is 759, 747. So for us, we're at 12.5% of the county population and statewide, 13.7% of the population. Total number of people who have completed the vaccine series is at 6% in Clay County, 3,829, and 6.4% statewide. People aged 50 to 64 with at least one dose, 14.8% of them, and then statewide, 13.4%. And then people aged 65 with at least one dose of vaccine, 40.5% and 41.7% statewide. And so there continues to be challenges on the Minnesota side for vaccine. I'm assuming North Dakota as well. The supply is our primary concern. Last week, Minnesota rolled out what they're calling the Minnesota COVID-19 Vaccine Connector. And that allows for all Minnesotans to register basically through the state vaccine. And they can sign up through MN.gov/vaccineconnector. So they're calling it the Vaccine Connector. And they will, when they register, they will be alerted when they are eligible for vaccine. They can, it will help to connect them to resources to schedule an appointment. And they will be notified if there's vaccine available for them in their area. So basically, what it does is it just alerts them if they're currently available, if they're eligible, and then it tells them who to contact. So as an example, if I were a teacher and teaching in Minnesota or a childcare provider and I completed that because I hadn't been vaccinated yet, it would let me know that I'm eligible right now. And in that case, it says to contact local public health. So that's what it's doing, is connecting them. If you're 65 or over, it would be your clinic or a pharmacy that may have vaccine in the community. So that's all on the map where you can locate vaccine available on the map. So currently, right now, it's showing Sanford, Essentia, and Walmart Pharmacy are the.
The flyer's on the back, last page of your handout as well, so of the connector that Jamie just talked about.
So the other thing is the community vaccination program continues. And so they have a call center for people to be able to call to register. And again, that's if you're eligible, if you're age 65. And those sites have not changed. They're in the Duluth area, Minneapolis area, and Rochester area. And as far as what we have been, oh, and then also, it's, you know, just like Minnesota rolled out some vaccine to their partner of Walgreens a few weeks ago, they are now focusing on 10,000 doses to go to the Hy-Vee pharmacies in Minnesota. And then in Clay County, find my right notes here. Last week, we administered in public health 900 second doses and 200 first doses. And our plan for this week is a total of 1,300 first and second doses. So we have clinics today, we have clinics Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday this week. We did have a delay and had to cancel 100 people last Friday. We wrote it out till Friday, but didn't end up with our vaccine due to the weather delays last week. So we had to reschedule them. So it's a little heavier for us this week. And that's about it.
So Jamie or Kathy, can we just spend a minute to maybe talk about what side effects might be that people might be able to expect? I know for first dose, typically there's been nothing but a sore arm type of thing, but, you know, we're hearing, you know, maybe 5% to 10% of the people might be getting additional side effects with the second. Can we just maybe inform the public a little bit what you know about that?
It does vary. And because of those side effects with the second dose, some it's none. And some, it can be a 24-hour kind of feel like they have a flu bug, fever, headaches, body aches kind of thing. Because of that, we're trying to juggle helping our partners that we're vaccinating so that all of their people are not vaccinated on the second, with the second dose on the same day. So we don't have a childcare center that's completely out. But most people are feeling well after 24 hours. Anything that is out of the ordinary is reported to CDC through a vaccine adverse event report that we have done some of those because of significant side effects. And everyone who administers vaccines is required to report to CDC if there's anything out of the ordinary.
And we do recommend, you know, Tylenol or Ibuprofen if you, unless it's contraindicated for you based on some health conditions, you have some chronic health conditions. But a lot of people are finding relief from those medications with the fever, the body aches, headaches. Those are the three top complaints, chills.
But the, I mean, the main message is that it's, can be common to have some side effects and in most instances, it's nothing you should worry about.
Right.
And it should not prevent you from getting the second shot?
That's right.
Correct.
Yeah, it's unfortunate that there's side effects, but they're short-lived and hopefully people don't shy away from getting the vaccine to protect them from getting COVID. That is longer lasting and certainly more problematic, so.
Thank you. Mr. Mojo.
Thank you. How does receiving the vaccine affect your ability to give convalescent plasma? Heard some different stories in terms of how it affects the quality of the plasma going forward.
You know, I'm not sure. Jamie and I both were signed up for convalescent plasma like a week or two ago, and our appointments were canceled because they don't need the convalescent plasma at this time. They had enough in storage that they didn't want to take additional convalescent plasma. So that was interesting to us that they canceled both our appointments. So they apparently have enough supply at this time. I'm not sure in regards to the vaccine, how that affects that. We could check that out.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
As long as we're talking about donating convalescent plasma, I'll throw in that we do have a blood drive the first week in March here. Not that you can donate the convalescent plasma, but to donate blood.
Thank you.
Anything else?
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I should thank these folks. Hey, as a resident of Clay County, they're just doing an unbelievable job. It's just, it's amazing. The hours they're putting in and the effort they're making, it's just, I don't know that people really understand what they're doing. It's just greatly appreciated and I certainly am, recognize what they're doing. So thank you very much to them. Another little baby step on our project here that I'm coming forward with today. We're, this is for the Resource Recovery Campus Project that we've talked about forever. And we're getting closer and closer to getting this thing done. Essentially, what I'm coming before you with is just, we went out January 22nd requesting proposals, request for qualifications essentially for a contractor of the facility. We received eight proposals. They were construction engineers, you all are familiar with. McGow, who I think you guys are familiar with. Comstock, who's done a lot of work out the landfill. Who I think you're familiar with. Donlar, they're out of the metro area. They're a big firm. Bradbury Stan, they're out of State Cloud. They're a fairly big firm. ICS, they're out of the area up here. TF Powers, they're fairly well-known in Fargo. And Lee Jones, they're a smaller firm in Fargo. Clay County staff, including Steve Larson, Overbow, Dave Overbow, Shannon Thompson, Julie Kennedy, Brett Rice, and myself, as well as our consultant, reviewed the proposals. And from that list, we selected four firms to, we're recommending to be invited for interviews. These firms include construction engineer, McGow, Comstock, and Donlar. We're proposing that the interviews take place March 3rd. And the interview panel will be essentially Jenny Mojo, Commissioner Mojo, Kevin Campbell, Commissioner Campbell, Steve Larson, and then three members from our Solid Waste Advisory Committee. So that's kind of where we're at. As I said, we're making progress. I feel like that's a good thing. And hopefully we'll get some good weather and get in, this project started fairly soon. So with that, I'll stand to answer any questions you all may have.
Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In terms of transparency for the public, can you talk a little bit about how these firms to interview going forward were selected?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner. We essentially use the same rating system that has been used for the LEC, the Law Enforcement Center, and also the jail. And as I mentioned, we had seven people look at it. They were, each project was, or each firm was looked at and awarded a certain number of points. And then from there, we ranked them.
Any further questions?
Mr. Chair, I will make a motion to move forward with the interview process for the four construction firms recommended.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Kaylee. Questions? So this is March 3rd.
Mr. Chairman, that's what we're proposing. And so far, everybody except for one person has gotten back and said that would be all right.
And is this, Steve, is this for a construction manager at risk? Is that what we're talking about here?
That is correct, Mr. Chair.
I think that should be noted for the record that that's the intent to go that route.
Mr. Chairman, the, as we move forward, the contract will be essentially the same as was used for the Law Enforcement Center and the jail. And again, those were construction management at risk also, so.
Okay. Any further questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign?
I thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have Joe, and we have Brian, and we have Janelle here to talk about the courthouse and what's, what we're going to transition to here. Joe, I guess you've been kind of the leader spearheading this thing, so we'll start off with you.
Okay.
Get into Brian's comments and Janelle's.
Okay. Yeah, so good morning, Mr. Chair and board members. Basically, I guess, to start off is, this has been a topic that's been in our building committee meetings. Basically, as you know, the second floor, county workers are going to be moving over to Government Center March, at the end of March there. So that would open up second floor. And as a part of this building committee, we've discussed how we want to see a justice center look. And this is a, today's proposed project is a part of that, maybe first phase of this. So I've put together some costs of the project itself, but I guess, before I get into that, I'd like to have Janelle maybe speak to her and/or Brian on yours, so.
You go first. I can go next, too. As part of the, just the justice centerpiece in general, as I think, Mr. Chair, commissioners, maybe some for the new commissioners, I think the idea that the courthouse would ultimately transition to a justice center has been something we've talked about for several years. And now with the new Government Center coming online, I think a lot of the pieces and moving parts are falling into place where it would allow for what would be basically a justice center, where it'd be county attorney's office, court administration, probation, and then the courts being in the facility. And that's really what we're looking at here. And so with the second floor being vacated, myself, Steve, had several meetings with court administration to talk to them about a lot of their needs. And so I think, as I've discussed some before, and probably will be discussing when I come in to do my own update, you know, one of the things that the COVID piece has shown us is that space is important for making sure we can safely continue to move forward doing court hearings, but especially trials and jury trials, and making sure that citizens are safe, that they can be socially distanced properly while we go forward with trials. And so jury, jury selection and people coming in as a jury pool has been a big issue. And so one of the things, when we talked with court administration, it was really a two-fold thing. I think moving them up to second floor where they're centrally located between courtrooms that would be potentially on first, second, and ultimately, I think, expansion in the future for third floor was an important thing to them. And then also looking at space that they could use and utilize. And so really, I don't know how far you want me to go before we maybe talk with Janelle, but I think one of the things you could look at with the maps that are on Attachment C, the current court administration area is on that first page in yellow. It says court administration. Ultimately, that would be looking at being proposed to become probation. And court administration would move what's on that second map. All of court administration would move up, take over the recorders area, the assessors area, and then the treasurer auditor area. And really, I think the good part of all of this, as you can see what Joe's put together, there's not a lot of new construction that's needed. I think there's one office that would be constructed to help them manage the vault. I think that's important to court administration, they can have a vault to put evidence in that comes in. So they have an office. They'd have a hallway, as you can see, that hallway would come open to allow them access into the back area where the judges are located. So that was an important piece as well. But otherwise, that area, something's already been repainted, recarpeted, is really ready to go and ready to be used for court administration. So once all the other land offices vacate, it's a natural progression that they'd be able to move up there, relocate, have a lot more room to start moving forward with court activities, but also jury activities. They would have room within that auditors office, treasurer office area to do jury pools and bring them in there. Gives them a lot more space. So they'd pretty much be ready to move in fairly quickly. And then that vacates the other areas that would allow future expansion that I think Joe or Janelle can talk about, too. So I just explained, I guess, that part of it. I think it's a good expansion. It's the right expansion. I think it makes sense for all of our use. But I just wanted to be here, I guess, to outline what made sense. Steve could probably talk to it, too. He had a lot of meetings with court administration. I think they're happy with this process. It gives them the space they need to expand. They've been, I think they are cramped as well and running out of, they don't have office space down the current one, anyway, so. Some of the issues there.
And good morning. I can speak a little bit to the probation office, just for a little bit of history. For the new commissioners, the Clay County Contract Office is contracted under the Minnesota Department of Corrections. So I oversee that office, but it, the financial responsibility for that department falls upon the county. And so we have a felony office in Clay County that moved off campus, I think, two years ago, maybe even longer. But at that time, the contract office moved into the Family Service Center Building. The space in the Family Service Center Building is very nice, adequate. Moving into that space, we weren't able to have sterile interview rooms that our staff would meet with clients. It also didn't have a bathroom within that location. And so currently, when agents are doing drug screening tests, they're taking them out into a public bathroom on that floor. It is, Detox is also located there. And so it was assumed that there wouldn't be a lot of traffic. However, we do get some traffic from other floors trying to find a vacant restroom. So that's kind of been a concern ongoing. So when Joe reached out and I understood there was some movement on campus, I definitely wanted probation to be considered for that. It does appear that the current court administration space would be appropriate for our Clay County Contract Office, allowing enough square feet for the staff to come in. Joe and I have looked at the possibility of creating a hallway for the flow of clients to remain in a secure setting. That would filter back to the offices to be used to meet with clients. It also gives us access to an internal bathroom that would only be used for drug screens and that kind of stuff. So it really would meet our needs. The Minnesota Department of Corrections has also asked us, moving forward, after learning a lot through COVID-19, people's ability to telework and work differently, that we look at our current lease base throughout the state. They've asked, like, our felony office. They've asked, like, our felony office, is there potential to move to somewhere that has less square feet? People can share space, it would be a collaborative work style environment. And so we're currently in our lease through August of '23, and so we wouldn't necessarily make any movement before that, but I would like to look at this space to see if our felony office could also merge in with the Clay County Contract Office. We, we do the same work and it would be nice to be under the same roof, so that would also be looked at.
And that, if that time came, there would be rental dollars available.
Correct, yep. The state of Minnesota would then lease space from the county. Yep.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. Comments, maybe? The, the dollars that you talked about in, in the memo that we got, $26,000.
Yes.
So, and, and somewhere in the document, it also says that your current, you currently have, in the, in the revenue account, there's $46,000. So are the, are these non-restricted funds, or?
They are to go towards correctional services. And so my perception is allowing this renovation to occur would allow us to effectively and efficiently address our needs for drug court. I believe the county is looking at a mental health specialty court. And also, we do pre-trial supervision services. And so there's a lot of drug testing that goes along with those. And currently, right now, those programs, we've done, we've moved the testing over to the felony office because of the volume. If we had the ability to have our clientele flow through a secure area to a private restroom to do that, we would be able to do our work efficiently.
So maybe, I'll rephrase my question a little bit. So the $26,000 that you're proposing that could go towards this process, those are not dollars that were, that would be taken from something else that is currently being funded through the county, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, that's, that's, that's kind of where I was kind of going with that.
Yeah.
And then, this of course does certainly coincide with what, what our Building Capital Improvement Project. If you recall last week when Joe gave that presentation, this is part of that, those dollars that are included in that overall. I would suggest that any motions that are made today that would go to, to your request, Joe, would, would be, would include the intent to be reimbursed from a capital improvement bond. I just think that we'd probably want to have this part of our, so that, to make sure that it would be eligible, even though we're spending it upfront, if we do that, it, it can become eligible for reimbursement, you know, out of our bond, so.
Yep.
Just for the board's information on that, that any motion we make should probably include that. Yeah, I guess that wraps up my, go ahead, Commissioner.
Yeah, Janelle, looking at this, I'm just trying to get an idea of the flow for your clients. Will they be entering from the southern entrance here, or will they be coming through the secure entrance in, in front of the courthouse?
They'll come in through the courthouse and then they'll come in, and I believe it's the north door, it's the current entrance to Court Administration if you were to be escorted through that common area. And then there would be walls built, kind of where the pillars are currently. We would just follow those lines and then it would remain secure all the way until creating a hallway into that office space, 142 and 141. And then there's one over to the side, but I, I crossed off my number and I don't know what office number that is.
45.
But towards the bathroom. So that whole back area would be the flow of clients, working with clients, meeting with them individually into those spaces. And then the, the hallway would create open area to the left and to the right, which would then be fluid office space for staff to work in. There, there's a vision of having some cubicles and some tables. So our staff was, all have laptops now, so they're mobile. The Department of Corrections has decided to not continue with desk phones. They will only have cell phones as their primary phone and so they're, they'll be very mobile. And so if they do need to take a call or do a Zoom meeting, they can certainly go into an open office and do that. They can find some space that provides them with some privacy to conduct their business. But then they can also be out in those larger areas, working in a cubicle or a tabletop.
My concern was that, if there was another entrance that, that the Sheriff's Office couldn't monitor or contain.
Right, and there's an office right off of the, where the Sheriff's Department Security Desk is, that's 138. That has a doorway directly out to the security desk. And then we would have a door leading into there. And so we talked about prioritizing that if we knew an individual was struggling and we were leaning towards that individual maybe needing to be taken into custody.
Okay.
These, oh, I'm sorry, so the south door, there, as it is now, that's, that's all by security key, right?
Yep.
And that, and that would remain the same?
Yep.
And I did speak with Sheriff Empteen about this plan as well, just to run this by him to make sure it's okay, and he, he definitely supports this.
Yeah, it was gonna be one of my, I think I might have sent you an email or something.
You requested, yeah.
Make sure that the sheriff and maybe Dave Johnson and Ryan Alderman are kind of where what, what our plans are, so that, in case there's something we, through the Building and Grounds, or Built Capital Improvement Committee, we didn't recognize from, okay, good, all right.
And one other note, too, on this, in, in Janelle's area on the first floor, the, you see the items in yellow. Half this project cost is carpet and paint and it's kind of killing two birds with one stone because it's like, we were proposed to come and do this anyways through the capital improvement, so it's nice to have states get their furniture upstairs and then we come in, put the carpet and paint as well. And then, we're proposing to use six to eight workstations from the new Government Center. We have plenty of those, so that's cost savings, too, towards the county, I would say, county costs, so.
And the Court Administration, the beauty in that is that's all been, already been redone and there's not a lot of work that has to go into that.
Right.
Commissioner Mosel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Two comments. One, we have had significant conversation with the courts in terms of needing space and being able to address the needs of a growing county. And so I think, two years ago, we were just looking at maybe a couple extra offices and I really think through collaboration and putting other projects off, this will really, really help all parties involved. The other piece is, I, I want to make sure and clarify for the public that this, this room, this community meeting space will continue to be a community meeting space. Even though most of our departments will be heading to the new Government Center, this room will be the commission room still. It will still be available for our, our different boards and commissions. And, and so even though the entire courthouse will be transitioning to a justice center, it will still allow for this room. And I think that's important to clarify.
Yeah, and I, that's really important and, and I think in the conversations, of course, the, across the hall from us where our previous boardroom was, is, that is intended to become a new courtroom. And I know we've spoken with Brian and, and hopefully the, hopefully that courtroom will become what you referred to as a master courtroom.
Right, I think, and then one of the pieces we didn't bring before the board today, just because I think there's future growth and other things, but, right, I think long-term, the idea would be that would be a courtroom, what we would refer to regularly as a master courtroom, where there, so you don't have to, because of the way our security elevators work in the tunnel, those ones would continue to be used for people that, you know, are coming out of jail or, or have security issues. This would be more, you know, folks that have traffic matters they have to refer to or juvenile matters that would come before the court or court trials, those kinds of things, that would be able to not need, you know, maybe that same level of security. I mean, they obviously come through, get through the front door check, but not have to be.
But there's a potential where that courtroom could be going on while we're holding a public event on this side.
Correct, absolutely.
So we want to make sure.
There still is security there and there still would be, there still would be deputies assigned to there, all those things, but it's not the same level of security required for somebody who's in custody. I think that's the pieces that we're looking at. So I think those are the future expansions that I think will be coming back through at some point with the entire capital improvement plan as well, but today we were just here to discuss these pieces. But you are correct, too, this, this room will remain. So as I say, justice center, this is absolutely a part of the justice center and that should...
This room, IT and, and a few offices right on this side of the hall will stay. Mr. Gross, you have a?
Just a minor question, these hallways going through the courtrooms. Right now, we've got a hallway on first floor, access to courtroom one and two. Now we're gonna do court, move them upstairs, now we're gonna do access to three and four. Why is that, why do we need access to the courtrooms? I mean, I mean, we're not gonna have access to one and two. I mean, the Court Administration won't have access to one and two anymore, will they?
Correct, they wouldn't because that'll now be, probation will be down there. And so that's why we were looking at building that hallway, so the Court Administration has access back to that back area and the courts, and the court has access to.
They don't have access to three and four now, then?
Correct, right now, they do not.
Right, but I mean, in the future, their only access will be to three and four.
Well, then there's stairs, but back behind that area where those courtrooms are, there's actually a corridor stairs, where you're looking at corridor 201 or 101A on the, if you're looking at that back part, there's a stairwell that allows them access back and forth between the upstairs and downstairs.
I was just wondering why they need that, those hallways.
Commissioner Gross, I think the idea is to keep the judges, have the judges be able to access Court Administration directly without coming out into the hallway.
Both, correct. So when you're looking at that, you're thinking through, like, each, each judge, each judge has a clerk, they also have law clerks, and so those folks are back and forth between Court Administration, whether they're getting documents. And then the judges as well will come forward to Court Administration at times to discuss issues with clerks, those things. So they're back and forth between those areas. And so, right, the idea of not walking out into the open area or leaving the courtroom from the front, it's a back access. Secured access.
The, the, the west entrance, that's, that's primarily just for, that's not for all of Court Administration, is it?
I, I don't know that all of them have. I, I think that the, the access that much of Court Administration uses would be the south access. If you're looking at that first page.
Where it's keyed there?
It's keyed there and I think regularly, they come in through that south door and then go right into Court Administration. I would expect now...
They'd go up a flight of stairs.
Go up a flight of stairs to get up to it, right?
Or they can go in the front.
And now, right, now, I think with this change, I, I would predict more likely, a lot of them will park in the front and go up and go up those stairs.
Well, they, they'd actually be able to use either the south or the north.
Correct.
And go in the keyed door.
Correct.
On this thing.
Absolutely.
Mr. Kaye.
And then, oh, sorry.
Um, this is a little bit of a rabbit trail, but just wondering about the law library, is that gonna stay where it is now, or?
I think the plan for the law library would be to stay right where it is. I think it's pretty well-located. I don't, anything we look at, think, right now, the plan is to keep that there.
It had relocated in a short amount of, it's only been in the position maybe two...
Probably three years about now, so, all right.
It's been an updated space from what it was.
Yeah. In terms of the project costs, just a note I've gotten, I have, went out and had two required quotes for the contractors of the, the construction piece of it. And I have TF Powers at 106, 400 and Construction Engineers at 122. So I'd like to move forward with TF Powers on that one as the low quote and then the note of the miscellaneous costs and the other contractors. I'll be doing the general project myself within house, so that's how that would work. So the total project cost would be 128,635 and then with Janelle's portion of the $26,000, we have 102,635 that would be out of either 119 or replenished after that, if a bond is up, so.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Mosel.
I will make a motion to move forward with the fit-up project for the Court Administration and County Probation Departments using TF Powers, Rix Electric and Network Center for the project with the amounts provided by Joe in his report. Also allowing for that to have the opportunity to be reimbursed through bonding if needed.
The intent would be to use bonding, okay?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Mosel, or second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? Steve, does that meet our requirements for bond reimbursement, right?
That does, thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for that.
All right. Did you have some? Okay.
I believe I need a motion to utilize...
Okay, we gotta, we gotta finish this motion.
Okay, sorry. It's okay.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign? Okay, now, Janelle, we need another motion for your, for you.
Yes. I need a motion to utilize the expenditure of supervision fees for an efficient use of this cure testing area towards the renovation of Court Administration space.
And you're asking that be 26, for spending $26,000?
Correct.
All right.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ebinger and second by Commissioner Gross. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign? Thank you all for being here.
Thank you. We hope, what, mid-May, somewhere in there, when project, this project timeline, to make some moves, so hopefully.
Great. All right, next we have our speed testing. Are we a little bit early here?
He's on.
Wait, okay, he's on, okay.
Nathan?
Can you guys hear and see me?
There you are, yes.
Good morning. Good morning.
Just maybe if I can, for our public here, we have Nathan Zacharias, right?
That's right.
Yeah, here to talk about a speed testing initiative regarding the Rural Minnesota Broadband Coalition.
Mr. Chair, if I may briefly, both Commissioner Gross and I serve on the Minnesota Rural Counties Committee and Mr. Zacharias presented to that committee and has, has kind of been keeping us up to date for a significant amount of months. And this is a high priority item for us in rural Minnesota and I thought it important that he come to present this vital, vital program. Thanks.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. I appreciate your valuable time on what looks to be a busy agenda. I'm gonna attempt to share my screen here, we'll see if this indeed works. Ha, perfect. Okay, you should be seeing on your screen the landing page for our speed test initiative here. And just want to briefly talk about what this is and then show you some information about how you can participate and what you can do and, and how it can help your community. So the, the speed test initiative is, is very simple, yes, sorry.
Not too, is there a way where you can enlarge that a little bit?
Let me see if I can do a little bit of a zoom in here. How's that?
There you go.
Does it a little better? So the speed test is, it's, it's really quite simple. It's a 30-second at-home internet speed test and once you do it, it'll generate a dot on our map. And what we're doing with our speed test initiative is, is looking for served and unserved areas. Most of our broadband maps that we have aren't more detailed than the census block or township or county levels. And if one home in a census block is served, then usually they consider the entire census block served. And I'll, I'll talk a little bit more about that in a second. And so what we're doing here is we're building house by house... And so what we're doing here is we're building house by house data about broadband speeds, and it really is our attempt to give a, a better picture of what service looks like. So we launched our speed test initiative on August 3rd in 2020, and we have about 50,000 speed tests taken right now. And our goals are, are twofold, is, the first is to create the most accurate maps in the country, as well as give community leaders like you the tools that they need to expand the networks within the communities. And the second goal is to bring our maps, which we're doing right now, to bring our maps to the legislature during the legislative session, just to show them to lawmakers and help them understand the need that's out there, especially in rural parts of our state with broadband access. They are setting their biennial budget this year, and so they will need to put some money into that state grant program that, that is one of the biggest drivers of broadband expansion in rural areas. That, that program ran out of funds this January, and so unless there is a new appropriation, they will have no more state investment in broadband. So here, I will, I'll move over here to the speed test that you've seen on your screen. This is our landing page. I will enter, there are several options here. You can enter an address with no available service, which indicates that at your home that you have no service. So this is, for instance, if you opened this on your cell phone, or you went into the library or the church or the McDonald's parking lot, whatever it is, and you got on some public wifi but wanted to let us know that you don't have any service at your house, you would click this option, and it will bring you to a page that you enter your information, and then you let us know why. Maybe, you know, I can't do it, I don't have a computer, it's too expensive, all sorts of options for you to select there. Then you can also enter an exact address, which is what I'll do for the purposes of our speed test. I live in St. Paul. We're also asking people include that they include information about how much they pay per month for internet, and if it's a part of your overall cable subscription, estimate how much goes to the internet. I pay about $50. You hit check address, and it will run for you. I have Comcast here in St. Paul, so it'll let us know who your provider is. And then we're looking at these top two numbers primarily. This tells us your download speed and your upload speed. I usually get around 80, but as most people are working from home in my neighborhood, and I'm on a Zoom call essentially, that cuts it in half, but still serviceable. And that's all you need to do. Tells you thank you, and then you can click here to view a state map of the results. I already have one pulled up. This is what our state looks like right now. So I will zoom in on, well, first of all, I'll say there are, there are patches of successful areas right now for speed testing, and then there are areas that don't have as many. I'll pull up an area that we, a county that we worked with recently to give you an idea of what that looks like when we have full buy-in and local broadband champions. I'm going to go to Candy Ojai County here, and what Candy Ojai County did, first of all, a green dot on our map means you have more than 25 megabits per second download speed. That's the requirement to be considered broadband. Less than 25 gets a yellow dot, less than 10 gets a red dot, and then that no service that I indicated earlier, they get black dots. So as you zoom in here, you'll see this is a particularly good one. This Lake, Lake Florida here, this is an entire community that has, has bought into, to taking our speed test initiative, whether that's a, they have a Facebook page that they all are on together. However, they heard about it, they've all bought into this and have all taken speed tests. Looks like we can, there's maybe some service here up on the northern side of the lake, but as you move around the other side of the lake, there is nothing down here for these folks. 4.5 download, .4 upload. In Candy Ojai County, we had a countywide initiative where they sent postcards out to all of their residents, and the New London Spicer School District, which is, New London's up here, Spicer down here, they actually had the emergency alert email system, school closing systems, things like that. They actually sent out an email asking parents and students to take this at home, since most of the students were at home. That's why you're seeing such proliferation of speed tests here. One thing I, two more things I want to show you, and then I'll step back for, for questions. We're going to zoom over to Shisago County and touch on that census block information that I talked about earlier. So what we have down here, this is Franconia Township down here, and I can actually hit keyboard key here, I can hit B2, and that will show township borders rather than county borders. This is helpful because most, that's not what I wanted. Shoot, give me one second, let me see. Most broadband applications to the state grant program. Oh, rats, well, we'll work with this anyways. We'll pull up this. So there, you can draw a rectangle on here, and it will pull up some, some satellite perspective data. And I'll get at what I was talking about before. So most, most broadband applications are done on the township level. They're often organized by counties but done by township for the build-outs. So within Franconia Township, you can see here, these blue highlighted areas with the blue borders, they are census blocks. And so when you are talking about, does an area have service or not? The FCC only requires you to have one home in this entire census block to have service. We've got that home right here. This green dot here has a connection via satellite for $210 per month at 34 megabits per second download speed. That means if this township or this county wanted to make this census block as part of an application, anybody over here who doesn't have service would still be considered served because one home in this whole area has service. The same can be said for this census block down here. They're oddly shaped, you can see, kind of strange boundaries. It's not a very efficient way of measuring that. So why does this matter to you? If you, as a county, choose to participate in the speed test initiative through promotion, and you generate, if you generate speed tests, then we can work with you to get you the deeper access to the, the speed test map, and this can help you plan for expansions in your community. What you're seeing here is not available to the public. This is locked behind a security, and there's a code that you need to get in here. What I would do is generate a code for you to use, so then you could then take a look at where your speed tests have popped up. I'm going to reload the map and then head over to Clay County and show you just quickly what that looks like. And we have some speed tests, but we do not have a ton. You can see already, you'd imagine that in the western portion near the border, these communities are likely served. Municipalities are, do a pretty decent job of working with providers. There's a lot of customers. But as you move out here, there's, there's some folks that have indicated that they don't have service out here at their homes. Red dot out here, for instance, that's pretty low speeds, yellow, red. So there are some pockets within your county that we're seeing some speed tests that indicate low levels of service, but we need much more data, we need more speed tests to give us a, a more accurate picture. I know I've thrown a lot of information at you. I, I think for now, I'll, I'll pause and, and, and pause for questions if there are any. I do, I do thank you for, for giving me a few minutes to, to present here. And happy to share my contact information with you if you have any further questions beyond today, too.
Thank you, Nathan. This, this is a significant issue, and it's a significant issue in Clay County, and I know, I mean, there are certain, when you get into our metropolitan areas, I don't know that we have a lot to worry about there, but the minute you get into the outlining areas. During our policy meeting last Thursday in transportation, this was also brought up as a critical item even through transportation. And there were some maps that were provided there, and you could actually break it down by county and by township, and I don't know if you have access to those maps, but I certainly think that would beneficial for our, our future plans and how we want to address these issues. If you have any availability to those maps that can drill, and it could also help even in, in getting the word out regarding this testing. In the air, in the critical areas where we need to have the testing done, I think that would be beneficial. Any maps that you could provide us in that regard would be very helpful.
Yes, I do. Those are publicly available through the Department of Employment and Economic Development and the Office of Broadband Development. They have township level and county level maps, and you can get a, I was looking at them earlier. I will send them along. You can get a good idea of which townships within your county have lower levels of service than others, and they're most likely the ones that you think they're, they are. As I said earlier, the municipalities do have, do have good service.
And one, one other thing, too. I know in the past, I've, I'm aware of these testing deals that you can do, and it, it's like a 30-second test, and it tests each individual resident. And you can actually go online, and you can Google test or something like that, and it'll come up with different links for you. In order, in order for it to be within what you're doing, is there, is there a specific testing site where people should go to? Right?
Yes.
Yeah, because you're not going to know about some of these other entities that are doing speed tests on behalf of the, you know, cable ones or the, those types of places, but.
Right, well, if, if I could get those companies that run speed tests to just give me their information, we would be in a really good position with our map. Unfortunately, they're very protective of that. So you, you're, you're right, you, you indeed, you do have to go to our website, MN, MNruralBroadbandCoalition.com/speedtest, and take the test on our website. I will supply that link and information to, to the board. And I also have some promotional materials, including flyers, postcards, size ads, little graphics for social media templates, all sorts of promotional materials. Should you choose to participate in promoting this, you don't have to come up with everything on your own. It's a, it's a very technical thing, and we've got a, a full stable of resources for you to use.
Well, that's, that's great, and I, hopefully, you can give us that link, and we can maybe get Mark to put it on our website.
So we've already put it on our website. It is on there. Thank you, Nathan, for presenting on this. There's, there's so many different tools that we can use to advocate for Clay County, and, and we've had the discussion about broadband for a long time, not knowing exactly where those, those dark areas are, where they're not being served. The first step is to collect the data so that we can advocate, and, and we're on enough boards with our, our school boards and townships and other municipalities that I really think we need to do our part to get the word out and try to collect the data so that we can move forward with what the plan is for serving these areas of the county. So thank you very much, this is important.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, thank you, Nathan.
Thank you again, have a great day.
Yeah, you too. All right, Dave.
Morning.
Morning, Dave. Then do we have three different items this morning that you're looking for action on?
Correct. Our first item is their, our annual small city resolution. That's the aid that the county gives to the small cities, inclusive of the city of Moorhead as well, for doing work on city streets and county roads within the city limits as well, so. Like I said, this is something that's in our budget, something that we've been doing since, I believe, the mid-sixties or so.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-16.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Mojo, a second by Commissioner Gross. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign, motion carried. Your next one is a request approval for assembly modifications for your walk-in, walk-in rollers.
Right, we, we were approved to purchase four motor graders this, a month ago. There's three John Deere's and one Cat. When, the way we purchase them now, they've got rippers on the back, which is essentially the mechanical item that lifts the walk-in roll up and down, as well as if you do need the ripper teeth on there, which we don't use very often, but nonetheless, it's the, basically the hydraulics there that lifts that up. There is a retrofit that we need that will connect our existing walk-in rolls to the machine. Three of them, or all four of them need the retrofit, it's $2,300 apiece. The three John Deere's need a little spacer, that's an additional 700 for those three, and then the Cat does not need that spacer how it's configured, but the total amount is $11,825. It's from Lycox Enterprises out in Billings, Montana. That's where we originally purchased these walk-in roll packers. I'm not sure if, if the new commissioners are really familiar with the walk-in roll. Essentially, it's just a big packer that pulls behind our motor graders, and I think we bought these maybe 10, 12 years ago or so. They're not cheap, they're in excess of $30,000 apiece, and we initially bought one, and we shared with a couple of motor graders, and then we bought one or two more. And over the course of about five or six years, it took us a while to fund 11 of them, but overwhelmingly, good response from the locals, the township officials like them. It is a figment of our township maintenance contract, so when we do work for the townships, that is included in there as far as, I don't know if I'd say revenues, but the, the contract dollars that we.
They help pay for it.
Correct, yep, they help pay for it.
Sports wishes.
I would say both.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried, your third item.
Yeah, our third item is another sponsoring agency resolution for an LRIP grant. This one is in Spring Prairie Township, and it's for the reconstruction and paving of three miles of 70th Avenue North. This is the road that kind of comes in on the north side of that precast concrete plant, and this road gets beat up regularly.
Right, and with the potential expansion, they're looking at essentially doubling the size of their facility out there, and they're, you know, in, in excess of 400 trucks per day, so. I think it's a viable project. It's a Spring Prairie Township road, so we would just sponsor their resolution and, and hope that more dollars come into our county, and this would be a, definitely a good project to get built, so I think it's a, it's a good project to recommend. We've, we've sponsored all of them that come through, but this is definitely an important one.
This is certainly a vital, vital project that we do hear a lot of complaints about. I would make a motion to approve in sponsoring their agency resolution, 2021-17. Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried.
I would like to maybe give a little update on our Holly project that we're working jointly with the city of Holly on. So the, the bid was last Thursday. So the way the bid was, there's, it's a, it's a very large project that is inclusive of the county roadway plus a lot of city infrastructure, all tied into one big project. So we got some numbers on that. We haven't seen the itemization numbers yet, where they, we were told we'd get them either yesterday or hopefully today, so we can kind of see our, our party specifically came in, whether it was high or low. I've heard that it is underneath what our planning dollars were on our five-year plan. I think we've got $390,000 of county-state aid set aside, and we were kind of told that the estimate was less than that, you know, months ago, and I think the bid did come in less, but we haven't seen it yet. The actual total project is about $6 million, and I believe it came in real close to the actual bid, so I guess that was good. There is a preliminary assessment hearings that were held in the city of Holly, and now they need, now that they've got the actual bid dollars, they've got a final assessment process, and that'll happen, I believe, like around March 15th or 16th. And they're not expecting to see any opposition to the project, and what I've been told is, if the, if there is no opposition, I'm hoping that the city of Holly will contingently approve the, the bids based on our approval as well, and then on the 23rd, we could come to this board and get approval contingent upon the same, but, so that's kind of the, the history on that. I'm pushing them, trying to get it approved as quick as we can, because then the, the low bidder, which appears to be HOG out of Detroit Lakes, they did a lot of the dirt work for, underneath Celine's, for our Glendon project this past couple summers. We've worked with them before, they rebuilt City of Hit it All back in 2005, 2006, so a good contractor. a good contractor. So I guess I'm hoping that we can get them going so they can start ordering their materials. They got a lot of pipe to order and a lot of shop drawings to be approved and different things so that we can get going on this real soon.
The project's been in the works for quite some time and, and we've had that MOU for quite some time. As a matter of fact, we just modified that MOU just not too long ago, a little bit to bring it up to date with, with new numbers and stuff. So I'm glad to hear that the bid came in decent.
Right, me too.
No action on that today. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have a request to hire a full-time position to backfill for deployment. Sheriff Emting.
Good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners. Thanks for having us this morning.
Good morning.
Me myself and Lieutenant Schroder here as well. As we discussed here about a month ago, and then we discussed in pick as well last week, we are going to have a deputy that's going to be deployed for nine months plus 40 days is what his orders are. His deployment starts on March 14th. He will be off the schedule March 7th. So he has a week to at least prepare before his long deployment overseas. Now, we are looking today to be able to backfill that position while he is gone to assist with some of the volumes of calls that we are seeing and things like that. Lieutenant Schroder was recently informed as well that we are going to have another deputy gone from about April to July for two different reasons. One's for another deployment and also for a training. He's, he's part of the Red River Valley Bomb Team and he's got a month-long training that he needs to attend for his certification. So we are going to be running a little bit short. So we are looking to hopefully fill this position relatively quickly and get somebody in place hopefully by March 22nd if approved today.
Well, you know, we did talk about the sit pick and I think it was unanimous amongst our committee that this is something that's going to be needed for you. You know, we talked a little bit about what it does for future. You know, that's, that's a topic for another day in terms of once your deputy comes back, does that mean we have one more? Or is it, or is it attrition? That's for another, that, that topic does not take away your needs are for 2021. And, and that's what our focus needs to be on today. And then through our normal budget process, we'll, we'll discuss what it, what it means for 2022 when, when the deployment is finished.
Correct, yes. And then we are also looking for 2022, that there are going to be some, some potential for retirements as well in 2020.
You, there's a plan, just so that the rest of the commissioners are aware, there's a plan that we're, that's being looked at. So Commissioner Abinger.
Sheriff, have you got a list or is this going to be somebody that you're going to have to spend time in a FTO program?
Yes, we would have to spend time in the FTO program. We are doing interviews tomorrow. We're, we're creating an eligibility list. We've always kind of been behind where we've always waited for retirement and things like that. And then we've moved forward with the hiring process where now what we're doing is we're trying to get ahead of the game, creating an eligibility list where we're able to grab that person. As you're fully aware, that way we're able to speed up that process. So after tomorrow, if approved, if this is approved today, after tomorrow, we will be able to move forward and offer a position to somebody.
Go ahead. I'll make a motion to approve the.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Abinger to go ahead and hire somebody to backfill the position while on deployment.
We just did the one, not the one that you.
Just doing the one for 2021, correct, yes.
Just a comment. I think that we have a multitude of folks that serve in other capacities. And I know our county attorney did as well. And just my, please extend my gratitude to those folks for serving in other capacities while also maintaining this position. It's quite an honor.
Yes. All right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried. Okay, that one's done. Now we're going to go to your correctional facility.
Correct. First off, thank you for that. Your support is appreciated. Now we are going on to the one that, this is going to be a little bit more difficult because we're going to be losing a longtime employee due to retirement. And the employee that we're losing is our current jail administrator, Julie Savat. And Julie has been an excellent employee for Clay County for going on 30 years. She has been an extremely knowledgeable person who has helped see the county through a new correctional facility build. So having her retire is going to be very difficult. It's going to be some big shoes to fill. But we would like to start the process to fill those shoes and to hire a jail administrator. It would be nice to be able to get this person in, in place by June 1st to give that person at least a month or a few weeks with our current jail administrator to be able to kind of learn some of their ropes. That's a, that's a nice new facility that we have there. And there's a lot of things there that they'll have to learn.
One of the things that, and I guess I don't see it in your request here, but if you were to, if you were to hire that position from within your, I don't see where you're requesting the backfill piece. I would assume you'd want the backfill piece.
We would. If that does come from within, we would have to backfill for whomever we would hire. You know, I, I do know that there is interest from within. So if that does happen, we would be back requesting that.
Well, I, I don't want you to come back. I think we should just deal with it now and be done with it if that happens. So you've, you've got, you can just keep, now I, I think that in terms of the backfill, I don't think the backfill would necessarily have to happen until, that wouldn't have to happen on June 1st. That could happen.
That could happen at a later time, correct, yes.
Mr. Abinger.
Sheriff, just, I, I extend my sympathy to you. You might be able to get the position filled, but you're not going to be able to replace Julie. She is, is a phenomenal employee. My experience and a couple of times, both within an organization and taking over command of a big area and then coming here, and I had two weeks with Grant Whalen, is still as chief. And I showed up and, and what I learned in, in both that and in taking new commands within my former place of employment is really essential, I think, to have a smooth transition. So the extra month is going to be well worth it. And, you know, I hope it is somebody internal that'll make a smoother transition. But I really strongly recommend we, we give that extra month.
I, seeing as we're talking about Julie, I concur with your comments there. And I, I want to say I remember working with Julie. I think we started and we went through the federal pony study back in 2008, I believe. I think it was called the pony study.
I think it's something on those lines, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's when we were first working on a, on a new correctional facility. That's how long we had worked on it. Actually, it's been started way before that, but then with the, what happened in early 2000s, that was tabled for a while. But yeah, she's incredible and she's, she's not going to be replaced.
It's, it's going to be difficult.
Yeah. I mean, it's, hopefully we're going to find somebody who's going to have equal qualifications and, and will, will handle it in a good way. But Julie will not be replaced. And she's been, she's really been good and she's been a really advocate for what we've done with that facility in terms of the behavioral component of it. She was a strong advocate for that as well to, and, and now we're looked upon very highly throughout the state and even through the, from the country, from this facility and what we're doing. So Julie had a lot to do with that. So make sure you give her our thanks for.
Absolutely. Yep, absolutely. She did have a lot to do with that. And she is, she's accepted not only that whole behavioral health unit is kind of her own little thing, but also the heart of Clay coming in there and doing all of our programming. She opened the doors to that as well. And that's been a, a great thing to have within our facility as well. So she is going to be very difficult to replace and it'll be tough.
Well, if we don't approve this, then she can't leave.
That's kind of what I thought too. I think she's going anyway.
All right. So I believe we have a motion and a second. We have not voted, right? Okay. Any further discussion? Oh, we don't have a motion yet. Well, then she can't go.
Yeah, I'll move.
Okay. Frank, is that, you made the motion?
Whatever. I'll do, okay, I'll make a motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Gross. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Abinger. Any further discussion? And that's, and that includes the backfill component, right?
Yes.
Voting under duress.
Yeah.
All right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. Okay, you got some work to do.
I do.
All right.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. We'll take a five-minute break. All right, we are back in session and our next item is an annual update from Social Services. And we have with us our director, Rhonda Porter, Kirsten, Jessica and Holly, right? No, we don't, no, we have, we only have two.
Yep, we have Holly.
Oh, there she is, okay.
I'm going to get us started and then I'm going to have Holly come up. So thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. We are here today to give you a department update. And every once in a while, I, I bring my supervisors with, so they are the experts. So this year, we're dividing our presentation up over a couple board meetings just to give our supervisors an opportunity to talk a little bit more in detail about their program areas. So we have three divisions here today. And so I'm going to just start us off. I did put at your desk the printed PowerPoint and then we have it up on the screen as well. So we'll get started. So in Social Services, we have, right now, we have 129 full-time employees and we have two variable hour staff. We have nine divisions. Three of those are here today. So we have our Licensing and Disability Services Division and Jessica Mickelson is our supervisor there. We have our Behavioral Health and Adult Protection, Kirsten Wagonist. Home and Community Based Services is Holly Warner and she'll be joining up, up to the podium soon. We have our Child Intake and Assessment. Quinn Jager is the supervisor. Ongoing Child Protection is Amy. Children's Mental Health and Child Welfare is Michelle. And then we have our Financial Services, so our Income Maintenance Unit, Child Support, Fraud and Collections and Office Support. And then our nine supervisors and myself as the department head. So we've, we've grown over the years and have specialized our divisions a bit for service delivery. We are all located over at the Family Service Center, but we're on various floors. So two of our divisions are located on first floor. We have one division on fourth floor and the rest are on fifth, fifth floor. So we're spread out a little bit in the Family Service Center. We, in addition to our staff, we have over 50 purchase of service contracts with community providers that help us fulfill our mandated services. And each year, I think in January, you've got a list of those contracts and what services we're contracting for and the amounts. So again, we deliver our services by our staff, but via those contracts as well. Much of what we do is governed by federal law statutes and rules. So you will often sometimes hear us complain about unfunded mandates and you'll see a little bit in the expenditure and revenue review that.
Can I say something really quick? I think that as part of our budget process, I would really like all of our departments, and since you're, you have a lot of them, to come up with the total unfunded mandate total. So that we can tell the, the public in terms of when we're looking at tax levies, what exactly that is. So just keep that in mind.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. So, okay. So this, this slide, what I was trying to show here is maybe a little bit of what you're getting at Commissioner Mojo. I, what, the first bar graph there shows our financial services or income maintenance unit. So that's the unit that administers like MFIP, food support, the healthcare program. So that's our financial services. And you'll see the 3.6 million is, and this is all of our staff as well as all of our administrative expenses. It's travel, it's, it's mileage, it's, you know, all postage, envelopes, all that kind of stuff. So about 3.6 million and we earn revenue at about 1.6 million. So it's about 48% of our costs are covered by revenues that are received via state or federal revenues or earned revenues for that particular unit. So you can kind of see the gap there in what the tax levy supports. In our child support area, you'll see there that this is a very heavily funded service area. This is Sandy Thorne's unit. So we have about 1.2 million in expenditures, but 1.15 in revenues. So they get about 66% reimbursement on most of their costs. And then in addition to that, they earn incentives based on their work. So this is one service area that is, is pretty well supported by state and federal funds. And then in the Social Services Admin area, that is all of our social service divisions. So the three that you see here, and it's also our Child Protection, Child Welfare and Children's Mental Health. You'll see a little over 7 million in administrative expenditures. That's all of our staff and all of those other administrative costs. And the revenue that we earn to support, to support that area is about three, 4.3. So again, you'll kind of see the gap. The next slide I wanted to show you is more of our purchased service areas. So you can kind of see here, and I don't need to go through each grid, but you can kind of see under children's area and mental health, that is your biggest gap in terms of where county level support is for those services. In the children's area, that is primarily out-of-home placements, which is what we talk about frequently. And that's one of those areas that we do earn some revenue, but it's quite highly unfunded. A lot of county support there. And then in the mental health area, you know, 3.3 million. Some of our children that are placed for mental health reasons, those expenses come under this area versus child protection. But also what you have in this area is our adult civil commitments, our cost to state operated services. That's coming out of Kirsten's unit. So again, that's, again, you'll see that gap to show you where those program areas are heavily reliant on the, the tax levy.
So Rhonda, just, so for people that are, might be watching here, so the, the green represents what the county pays.
Expenditures, yep.
Expenditures and the orange is what is financed by federal or state.
State or, yep, other earned revenues. Yes, that's correct. So this is 2019 data. We haven't closed the books yet for 2020. So I'll be coming back to you maybe in a month or so with more current 2020 data. We could do some comparison to see what COVID has the impact of that on some of our revenues and expenditures. So, and then the next pie chart there is just breaking out our revenues by source. So you have state, federal, tax and other miscellaneous, which is earned revenues or fees. Now, the one thing to point out with this is that under the tax where it has that 10.4 million, about 950,000 of that is actually county program aid. So I probably should have put that under the state slice versus tax. But so just, just a note. So that, that tax levy amount is actually a little less than 45%, if that makes sense.
County program aid isn't guaranteed either.
Pardon me?
County program aid isn't guaranteed either.
Yeah, absolutely. Right. Unfortunately, it feels as though a lot of our revenues, whether they're state, federal or other earned revenues are not guarantees. You know, rates change from year to year, allocations change from year to year. Sometimes we get an allocation at the beginning of the year and mid-year it changes.
But the mandate doesn't change.
Yes, correct. But the mandate and the requirement for our level of services don't change. So, okay, so that's just kind of a, a high-level overview. We're going to start with Kirsten Wagonist. She's going to talk a little bit about her Behavioral Health and Adult Division. And then we'll go to Jessica and Holly. And then next Tuesday, I will have some of the other supervisors coming for their program areas. I'm going to step away and let Holly come up here. Man the computer.
All right.
So good morning. Like Rhonda said, I'm Kirsten Wagonist and I supervise the Behavioral Health and Adult Protection Unit. Within that unit, we focus on three different areas: mental health, chemical health and adult protection. So I'll start with mental health. We have four full-time staff. So for those of you that are new commissioners and maybe don't. So, for those of you that are new Commissioners and maybe don't know as much about civil commitments, it's a process that we go through when someone is deemed to be a danger to themselves or someone else. So, our unit gets contacted either by the hospital or a family member, community member, someone that has concerns about an individual, and they request civil commitment. So, part of that process is our pre-petition screening where we gather information, talk to collateral contacts, go through, pull those micro-micros on.
Yeah.
Sure.
There you go.
Sorry. And then we go through our screening process. We have a pre-petition screening team. And through that process, we determine if we feel per statute there is enough information to proceed with civil commitment. If we do, we file a report with Mr. Milton. We keep him fairly busy. So, as you can see, our numbers over the last couple of years have increased slightly. Our 2020 numbers, we did a better job of tracking referrals that we received from the Child Protection Unit for women that are pregnant and using substances. So, we just did a better job of tracking that. So, that's why the 2020 numbers seem to be a little bit higher. Our civil commitment numbers over the last two years have remained relatively stable. Our Behavioral Health Unit also monitors individuals that are housed on the St. Peter campus in the Minnesota Sex Offender Program that have either been committed as sexually dangerous or sexual psychopaths. We have eight individuals that we currently monitor in that program. Our unit also monitors individuals that have been committed as mentally ill and dangerous. And they are also housed on the St. Peter campus. We have four individuals currently that we're monitoring there, and we do have one that is in the community. And he's been in the community now for, I'd say, probably 20-plus years. And then we also have one staff who provides targeted case management. She has a caseload of 30. She's kept very busy. She has remained busy through COVID, meeting with her, with her clients as needed. Some of the committees and the partnerships that we have through our Adult Mental Health Unit is the Becker Clay Otter Tail Wilkin Adult Mental Health Initiative. We have participated in the Reintegration Advanced Planning, or the RAP, project with our Corrections that has been on hold due to COVID. I'm hoping that can get started again eventually. We also work with the River Project in the Clay County Jail. We work with several different homeless and housing committees. Some of them listed the FM Coalition to End Homelessness, the CARES Governance Board, which covers the entire state of North Dakota and West Central Minnesota, and the Clay Wilken Homeless Advisory Board. We are also active in the Adult Mental Health Local Advisory Council, and we have started discussions involving the development of a mental health specialty court. So, that kind of wraps up our mental health unit. Our Chemical Health Unit, we also have four full-time staff and one case aide, and they are kept busy as well. I have listed the number of evaluations that we have completed within our unit over the last three years, and as you can see, the numbers have gone down. That isn't necessarily a bad thing. There are several different reasons why the numbers are much lower in 2020. One of those, over the past couple of years, we have gone from four and a half assessors to three assessors. Two of our staff have gone back to school, have continued their education. So, they were working part-time. They completed their internships, though they just, they weren't available as often. You may have heard about our Substance Use Disorder Reform, our SUD reform. And that is just, the state is changing how individuals can access chemical health services. So, you may have heard about direct access. So, in past years, if an individual wanted to go to chemical health treatment, they had to have an evaluation. A lot of those evaluations went through our office because they needed funding with direct, direct access. The hope is an individual can go directly to a provider, let's say Anchorage in our community. They can have the chemical health assessment there. They can start the programming there, and there isn't that lag time to make referrals for services and getting releases to do all of that. So, that is, the hope is that all of this can happen in a quicker manner. So, that's partly why our numbers have decreased as well because people are accessing other services and not necessarily having to come through our unit. And that allows us to work with those individuals that don't have private insurance and, and actually need to work with us. So, it gives us the availability to get them in quicker as well. In past years, we have had our evaluations booked out for six, eight weeks, and that's never good. We want to get people into treatment much quicker than that. So, the hope is we can start doing that. Another reason why our numbers have been down just in the, in completing the evaluations is we used to do walk-ins. Our no-show rate had been quite high. Individuals scheduling an evaluation and then canceling and doing that several times. So, we tried to do a walk-in day where it was just time set aside. People could come in, have an evaluation, and not make an appointment. And with the county campus being closed due to COVID this last year, we haven't been able to do those.
So, those were all just volunteer?
They had, yes, they had, the walk-ins typically were, they may have been some court-ordered ones, but typically it was just individuals that needed to come in because they wanted to get into treatment.
Want to get some help?
Yep, yep. Just some of the other reasons why the numbers have been down a little bit this last year is our unit is seeing individuals referred from the court. In previous years, it had been, you know, one-time DWI offenders, and we're not seeing that as much, partly, I think, because the court, the hearings had been canceled. So, people didn't have to get their evaluations completed within a certain timeframe. Our numbers are starting to pick up now with, with court being back in session and having, having some of those hearings. Individuals, they need to get their evaluations completed. So, the numbers are back on the rise. And then through our Chemical Health Division, we also offer case management services. And I think through COVID, we have been able to do a better job with our case management and reaching out to individuals. They haven't been able to come into our office, so we've had to do more through phone, through Zoom or, or Teams. And we've been able to keep connected with our clients that way. And I think actually the staff have done a really good job in keeping connected that way. I think they've actually had more time to focus on staying connected with their clients. Some of the committees and partnerships through our Chemical Health Unit, again, participating in the RAP project, participating in Drug Court, Veterans Court. We also take part in the Clay County Substance Abuse Committee, the Criminal Justice Advisory Committee. We collaborate with our Clay County Detox for services and programming. And we partner with multiple community providers that provide chemical health treatment services. So, that's our Chemical Health Unit. Our Adult Protection Unit, we have two full-time staff. And those numbers, so a few examples of some of the reports that we see for, receive through Adult Protection. We receive reports related to abuse, self-neglect, caregiver neglect, financial exploitation, elder abuse. Kind of see the, the gamut of reports that come in. During the last year, a majority of our reports have focused on self-neglect. People are concerned about their family member. They're not getting out of their home. They're not getting services like they had been. So, we have seen an increase in those reports. So, over the years, the number of reports that we have screened have remained relatively stable. The number of investigations that we conducted in 2020 were slightly less for a couple of different reasons. Our Adult Protection workers are doing more in the intake stage than they used to. They're gathering more information. They're talking to collateral. They're trying to see a bigger picture before we even screen the reports. And so, that has decreased the number that we have screened in just because we've been able to do more in that intake stage. We've also talked as a unit that because of COVID, again, family members aren't seeing their loved ones. Their services aren't going into the home. People aren't going into the clinics and seeing their doctors, where we receive multiple reports as well. All of those things have just been decreased because of the lack of interaction. We have discussed as a unit that we anticipate the numbers of reports that we receive will increase once things return to some sort of normal. As people are interacting more with one another, we anticipate that those reports will increase. Some of the committees and partnerships through our Adult Protection Unit, we partner and coordinate with the Cass-Clay Elder Abuse Forensic Network. That's a mouthful. And that's our multidisciplinary team. We meet once a month with them. And then our Coordinated Community Response Coalition, we also meet monthly. Both of those are with individuals from the Clay County side of the river and the Cass County side of the river. It's beneficial to do that just because we have individuals that go back and forth between the two communities, and they're often known on both sides of the river. We also participate in the FM Hoarding Coalition, the Adult Protective Services Regional Committee, and our World Elder Abuse Awareness Day Committee, which we hopefully will be having a presentation sometime in the fall, is our hope. It was put on hold last year, so we hope we can have one this year. Some of the challenges that our division faces is just this shortage, shortage of state-operated beds at our community behavioral health hospitals, the Anoka Metro Regional Treatment Center, and our forensic services, which is housed in St. Peter. We see a shortage of community providers and services for those individuals that are discharged from state-operated services back into the community. The complexity of the population we serve has, it's grown. We, in past years, you may have seen just an individual who has chemical dependency issues. We don't see a lot of just those issues. Now, we see an individual who has chemical health issues, mental health issues, and then they also have physical health issues, and just the complexity of their needs has increased. I discussed earlier substance use disorder reform and direct access. This was implemented by the state of Minnesota with limited direction, limited assistance. It's very frustrating for our staff. There's a lot of unknowns. We may reach out to state personnel, asking questions, and it feels like sometimes they don't even have the answers themselves. So, it's really difficult for us to try to wade through this new program. We're getting there. We're also going through the Vulnerable Adult Act redesign, and we are trying to, through that, trying to move from a reactive stance to a more proactive stance. And then we're also facing proposed budget cuts to the Adult Mental Health Initiative, which will greatly impact our area if those cuts go through. So, more to come on that.
Great. Very good report. Thank you, Kirsten.
Good morning. My name is Jessica Mickelson, and I supervise the Licensing and Disability Division for Social Services. I have four licensers that complete licensing activities for community residential settings, adult foster care, county-certified homes, family foster care, corporate foster care for children, and family childcare. I also supervise our Adult and Disability Services intake worker. We have five Men Choices Certified Assessors in my area, and then we have one SMBC Care Coordinator who serves SMBC enrollees through our contract with Ucare. The next slide kind of shows some trends with our adult foster care licensing. And the numbers for community residential settings has pretty much stayed stable over the past six years. But you can see the adult foster care has seen a significant growth in the past six years, and I'll get into some details regarding that here in a minute. And our certified county homes has stayed relatively stable as well over the past six years. Our child foster care licensing has stayed relatively stable. There's always an influx with, with this area. It kind of ebbs and flows throughout the year quite significantly. You can see right now for 2021, they currently have 63 licensed homes, and this would include relative and non-relative child foster care. But they have 29 applications pending currently.
Yes.
Jessica, I have a question quick. In terms of the 29 pending applications, can you give me an estimate as to the average amount of time that these are in a pending status?
Oh, you know, it varies greatly from each applicant, depending on how quickly they move through with completing the requirements of licensing. It can be anywhere from probably two to three months to four to five. And I would say a significant amount of those will never complete the licensing.
Okay, and so do we typically have a carrier over that's, that's that amount? I mean, do we usually have upwards of 20 in a pending process?
I would say that's pretty typical.
Okay, thank you.
And then the corporate foster care for children has also remained stable over the last six years. The next slide is regarding our family childcare or daycare for licensing. And you can see we've seen a significant decrease in licensed childcare settings in Clay County over the past six years. It's actually gone down by 61 providers since 2015. And I'll speak a little bit about that decrease as well here in a minute. So, committees for licensing services include Cass-Clay Elder Abuse Prevention Committee, the Early Childhood Initiative. Julie and Karen are our two daycare licensers, and they serve on a grant committee through Child Care Aware, which focuses on assisting non-English-speaking people to become licensed daycare providers. And then Julie Clear is also our Clay County Public Guardian. Challenges regarding licensing services, so in regards to the slide for the significant increase in adult foster care providers, that's been difficult for one licenser to manage that significant growth in his program area to ensure that the orientation process is completed properly and then just ensuring adequate ongoing training and support for those providers. Another challenge for licensing is regarding shortages of available family foster homes for large sibling groups, teenagers, and children with behavioral concerns. Daycare costs also continue to be an ongoing issue for family foster homes. And then regarding family childcare or daycare, just a lack of new applicants. We've seen a significant number of daycare providers kind of age out and retire, and we're not seeing that influx of new applicants in that area. Or what we have, what's kind of trending is people will become licensed, but they're not doing this for a career. They're doing it for, you know, a period of time, maybe while their children are young, so five, six years, and then they close their license. We've also seen some struggles with some of our long-term daycare providers adapt with the technology, and that's kind of the initiative where we've been given from the state of Minnesota is to have as much of our licensing process online as possible. But then, especially during COVID, it's been difficult to support those providers with completing that, their licensing requirements online, so.
Jessica, you said daycare costs continue to be an issue for foster families. Why would they have, would a foster family need daycare?
So, if someone is, if a child is placed in a foster home and the foster parents work, then they would, the children would typically go to daycare. And they do get some reimbursement for that, but... And they do get some reimbursement for that, but as daycare costs continue to rise, there's a gap there.
And as we pay the foster family to take care of the child, and they have to pay someone else to take care of the child for them.
Right. They do get reimbursed at a little bit higher rate to cover the costs of daycare, but it's continuing to be a gap there.
You probably want to come to a microphone, Rhonda, please.
So, so over the years, our demographics in our licensed foster homes has really changed. In years past, it used to be that, that one of the licensed foster parents typically were home. So daycare wasn't so much an issue, but that has really changed probably over the last 10 years, where we're finding that most of our foster parents both are working. So then that childcare becomes an issue with that. So it's really been a trend that's changed over the years. The way foster care payments are figured, childcare becomes a part of the formula. And so some of the cost of the childcare is included in their daily rate. And then depending on the cost, there's a little bit of supplemental. So it's been an issue that we've kind of had to really deal with more and more over the years, so.
Rhonda, maybe, maybe you can get into that, into a little bit more specifics when we go through our budget process. I think it'd be worthwhile to understand that.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right, I will continue here regarding initiatives for licensing. We are working hard to improve our orientation process for new foster parents. We're also working to increase our support to foster families. And during COVID, we used CARES Act funding to make technology available to help support foster homes in facilitating virtual visits with birth parents. Family childcare has a new electronic licensing tool called Elicy. So that's been a new program that they've had to work with and adapt to. And all of our family childcare licensing material is now on Clay County's website, so it's more accessible to people who are interested in becoming a daycare provider. And then another significant initiative for our program area is recruitment for both child foster care and daycare providers. So regarding disability services, we have one adult and disability intake worker. Miriam Danielson completes intakes for adult mental health, developmental disabilities, and Min Choices assessments. She's kind of the first step for initiating services in those program areas for social services. And you can see from 2016 to 2018, there was somewhat of an increase in intakes, and then during 2020, we saw a significant decline in intakes. And that is to be expected, just people weren't reaching out wanting to start new services during the pandemic. And then, like I said, we have five dedicated Min Choices assessors in my unit. And Min Choices is the web-based tool that we use to conduct assessments and support plans for people with chronic care needs. That helps them make decisions about their services, and it also assesses us in determining their eligibility. And our initial assessment data that includes Min Choices conducted by our two dedicated initial assessors in social services and our two dedicated initial assessors in public health. And the other graph there shows our reassessments, which we have three dedicated Min Choices reassessors and then three part-time Min Choices assessors as well that are in Holly and Kristen's units. And the next graph just goes over our members served through our Ucare contract for special needs basic care. And that is another area that really ebbs and flows during the year. So this is kind of a snapshot in time of what the average was during the past four years for Sarah's case load. And then my last slide just reviews some challenges and initiatives that we're seeing with disability services. And again, this is probably similar to what Kirsten and Holly's units are seeing, but just high volume of assessments, in case load sizes, ongoing technology issues, and changes with state programs, the complexity of the population that we serve. Last year was very difficult to manage all of the policy changes regarding COVID. Things were changing at a very rapid pace, and to try to keep up with it all was, was a daunting task. And then our biggest initiative for disability services is the Min Choices Revision Project, which is expected to launch later this year, which will combine all of the programs that we currently, like the technical pieces that we do for assessments, care plans, and health risk assessments. It's going to combine everything into one, one program.
I want to comment on your managing changes during COVID. That's one thing. I think all of us as commissioners have spent a lot of time in thanking all of you for having to deal with what was brought forth unexpectedly when this all transpired. And certainly, you know, go back to your staff and tell them that we really appreciate everything that they had to do. What we, what we had to do, we had to do for public safety, for not only our staff, but also for our clients we serve. So I know it wasn't easy. Hopefully, it'll, it'll improve, but that's... I'm glad you came to us and told us about those frustrations. So, thank you.
All right, good morning. I am Holly Warner. I am the supervisor of our Home and Community Base in Rule 185 Division. So within my unit, I have 14 staff, 12 of which are case managers. And their primary focus is to oversee the person's disability services. So that's going to include ensuring the person has services that's going to address their assessed needs, monitoring those services, ensuring their person's centered, and advocating for any of their needs. The case managers serve people of all ages, so from, from birth on up. And the, the person being served could be on a Medicaid waiver or our Rule 185, which is our developmental disability case management. And then our two case aides are tremendous help to the case managers. They're the ones doing a lot of administrative activities related to that waiver case management and just providing some support to the case managers so that they have some time to spend directly with clients and providers. And within my unit, we have our disability waivers, so that is our four waivers that include brain injury, CAC, which is Community Alternative Care, CADDY, and that's the Community Alternative for Disabled Peoples, and our DD waiver, or Related Conditions waiver. So of those four waivers, we serve about 678 people currently on our Medicaid-funded waivers. We do with our CAC waiver, that is, the criteria is a hospital level of care. So those folks have some pretty high needs. And our public health, we do partner with them, and the public health nurses take the lead on that case management. And then a social worker is assigned as a secondary worker for support. In addition to our Medicaid waivers, we have other program areas within my unit, some of which are state and county-funded. So again, that Rule 185 DD case management is specific to people who have a developmental disability or a related condition, and it's not Medicaid-funded. The relocation service coordination in nursing home for under 65, that is specific to people who are in a nursing home and are looking to relocate back into the community or into their home. The Family Support Grant is a statewide cash grant program. We do have some county-funded respite, a little bit smaller of a program, but are serving one family at this time, providing some respite. And then our SILS program, which is a semi-independent living services program. This is county and state-funded, serving people with a developmental disability or a related condition who need supports to live in the community. And then lastly, our county-funded DTNH, or Day Training and Habilitation. And again, this is for people 18 or older with a developmental disability or related condition needing some support with life skills to participate in the community. Some of our partners within my division that we work with in the community include a large group of home and community-based, community and statewide providers. We do work, you know, locally with many providers as well as providers across the state, you know, whether it's foster care, other type of Medicaid services, nursing homes locally, as well as across the state, and hospitals. We work closely with our local school districts, Head Start Advisory Board, Family Support Model Work Group, School Age Disability Work Group, and CETIC, which is the Community Transition Interagency Committee. And that focuses on those kiddos, eight, or excuse me, 14 to 21, who are in school, have a disability, and working on transitioning from school to adults, services as an adult. And then lastly, the Developmental Disability or Intellectual Disability Task Force, which is a partnership with local community providers as well as providers across the river in Fargo, focusing on support for people with a developmental disability. Current challenges that we're seeing, we've been, for the last few years, we've been seeing challenges with the shortage of direct care staff with our home and community-based providers. So our local providers just not being able to find staff to work directly with our folks has been a huge challenge, as well as continuing to implement person-centered practices across all of our services and supports, increasing paperwork with changes, and certainly this last year with COVID and many changes comes along, that increasing paperwork. And then managing some of our high caseloads. Upcoming initiatives, one of our larger initiatives coming, that is currently being worked on and will continue to be worked on for a number of years, is waiver reimagine. And this really is, in 2017, the Minnesota Legislature required DHS to conduct two studies to identify efficiencies, simplifications, and improvements to our four disability waivers. And then in 2019, the legislature again authorized DHS to make system-level improvements to our disability waivers. So essentially, the goal is for DHS to be working on simplifying those four waivers into two, developing individual budgets for people, and really focusing on changing services, supports to align with the person's needs rather than their diagnoses. So this will allow for people to be able to have a little bit more control over their services, more choice, be transparent with the supports and services that they're receiving in direct to their own services as well. So with waiver reimagine, there's two phases, and phase one just started this January of 2021. And essentially, what that was is to streamline and simplify our waiver services. So under our four disability waivers, there's multiple different types of services that a person can be authorized. And the goal is to simplify those, any of them that are similar to combine into one, have the same option of services across different waivers. And then starting in 2022 and beyond, the goal is to then implement individual budgets for people on our waivers and moving from the four waivers to two. And that's it. Any questions for us?
I, I would like to just make a comment on the, on your current challenges. When you talk about the shortage of direct care staff with our providers, I don't need a comment from you today on it, but between you and Rhonda, I hope during our budget process, we can talk about those providers and what our contracts are with them, and, and how they are or not, or are not fulfilling those contracts. I think it's, that's an important item here that we're talking about, that, you know, we're looking for providers to help assist our citizens. And if, if they're falling short on staffing, what, what is that creating in additional problems? So you don't need to even comment on it today, but I am just suggesting that that be something that's brought up during our budget process. Anybody else? Those are very good reports. Thank you. Very thorough. All right, thank you.
Thanks, you guys.
Going to committee reports. Commissioner Gross, would you care to start today?
On Tuesday, we had a pick committee meeting, which pretty much, part of it was Sheriff emptying, which we already discussed today, so that's pretty well taken care of. And the other thing was, we discussed sick leave donations for people on family leave and stuff like that, and whether we want to continue or add being able to donate sick leave for people on family leave. Pretty much what that meeting was about. On Thursday, we more likely probably, all of us probably attended that Association of Minnesota Counties AMC meeting. And in the morning, I don't know, they had several speakers that talked about different things. They had the legislators talking. In the afternoon, we went into each of our own sessions, which I had channel government. I don't know if there's any more updates on it. We talked about broadband, we talked a lot about homelessness, about the cost per day for services for homelessness. Which way would be better to build, should we build houses for homelessness, or should we just take care of the homelessness by giving them services and stuff like that? Sometimes it's better to build, just to go out and build a building for them. But then you have to maintain that too, so there was discussion on how to do homeless. And we thought that legislative issues, they presented on solar taxation, all these solar places that are coming in now. I think we've seen them in Highway 9, we got several solar. So what is the right taxing capacity for all of these solar places? How do you tax them? Then yesterday, Lakewood Menton Health gave their annual report, and it looks to me like they're doing real good yet. And Jenny can probably report that better on that. She's the chair of that, and like I say, I think they're doing real good. Those are the three meetings I had.
Thank you. Commissioner Moschow.
Thank you. Last week, I was asked to present with AMC on, at the new commissioner's school that two of our commissioners take part in, in terms of balancing your role between work and family life. Commissioner Svei from Lake County, Commissioner Malteer from Wasika County, and Commissioner Vetch from Wright County. I'm not sure I even have all the answers on how we all balance everything that we do, but I was honored to have the opportunity to discuss that with the participants. The next day, I attended the legislative conference. I felt that the update from NACO was probably the best update that we've ever received. Some, some really good things that they're working on nationwide, particularly the MA issue. I know that caught my eye. That would be a game changer in terms of some of the costs that we have been incurring. So that would be a great thing moving forward. Good updates from members of the House and Senate in terms of bills that they're working on. There is a lot going on with COVID mitigation, but also with some of the bills being proposed. I, I think there are a number of bills that I know Clay County has a vested interest in, just making sure that we're following those, those closely. And then too, an update from And then too, an update from Governor Walz as well. That afternoon, I attended the Environment and Natural Resources Policy Subcommittee. We had great presentations from the DNR Commissioner in terms of their budget and what they're looking at going forward. One thing that COVID has shown is that Minnesota residents have really been using the public resources that we have. That's been a great thing, but there's also, that comes at a cost because it's increased the amount that they need to have to maintain some of those public parks and utilities otherwise, but they're doing a good job in terms of that. We'll see what the budget will look like going forward. Also had updates from Bowser in terms of different programming and needs that they have there. Continued to, you know, I feel like AMC has done a really good job in allowing us to take part in a virtual environment, but still really have a good grasp on everything that is going on statewide. So my kudos to AMC for that. I worked a lot on Friday with the Chief Financial Officer from the University of Minnesota Extension in terms of wrapping up the MOU agreement that we will have for the Extension Committee's approval this Friday. That looks good going forward, not too many changes in terms of what that would mean to our budget if approved. Yesterday, I attended the Cass-Clay Food Partners Steering Committee meeting. We have a couple new members on that steering committee and discussed what our next board meeting will look like. We will have some good updates from the different entities in terms of what food systems, ordinances, and comp plans, and all of the discussions that are having, that we are having between Cass and Clay Counties, update for those partners there. I did encourage them to talk to Mandy at the SWCD about our pollinator habitat and how that is shaping now that it's been planted. After that, I attended the Lakeland Mental Health Annual Board Meeting. Thank you to the members from this board that attended that, that we had a financial report for the center. They really did a great job in terms of helping to mitigate some of the issues that were coming down the pipe in terms of COVID and how that would affect program delivery for them, and a good report from the center. I did bring a copy of the annual report, if anyone would like to have that. It's available. After that meeting, we had our February Board of Directors meeting for that. We did approve the election of officers. Looks like I get another year's chair, but we do have a couple new members, so that will be a different looking board going forward. One item that's really important to note from the Minnesota legislation part of it, after COVID, the Minnesota Legislature allowed web telehealth to be billable, and that was done through a short-term agreement and is looking like that will expire, and that will really tie the hands of Lakeland in terms of service delivery. They've done a good job in meeting that need and still allowing folks to get emergency, being seen emergency, under an emergency situation, or making sure that their service is not disrupted. And I think it's really important that we continue to advocate for that. That has been a good shift for that going forward. And then just discussed general board duties. I, as all of us did, received from the Township Association that they will not be having their spring meeting this March, and they did request some information. Steve, did you, have you forwarded this to our departments to respond?
I'm the chair. Commissioner Mojo, they have all, they all have that information, yes.
Okay, so I think it's, make sure that we all reach out to the township so they know what's going on. I think it's based on Mr. Zacharias's presentation, I think we can forward that broadband test as well to them. That concludes my reports, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, I've got one more item.
Commissioner Gross.
Representative Paul Margaret has requested, doing away with Truth and Taxation Day, or calling it something different, Taxpayers Advocacy Day is what he's calling it. Because every time we have those meetings, we seem to have the wrong group coming forward. They always bring in their tax statements and say, you know, I got my tax too high or whatever. It's, they're not seeing the right purpose of the meeting, Truth and Taxation. So he wants to redo that somewhat, I don't know. I'm sure there'll be something coming down with that, but he's looking at changing that truth and taxation thing.
Thank you. Commissioner Irvinga.
First meeting I had last Wednesday, the Greater Fargo-Moorhead EDC had its morning meeting. Chairman Graham and Joe Roscoe, the ED. A new member was voted in, Jennifer Bath. The ED's report showed, looked at the three-year project they're doing and the third year, tracking capital investments, new jobs, total projects, all those are up, and they're on a good path with that. They also discussed the Valley Prosperity Partnership, which is really kind of North Dakota-focused, but we have a lot, we have some skin in the game on that, in that a lot of the legacy fund bonding over North Dakota is going to go into the diversion program. And they're also looking regionally at career academies, which we've got one starting up here in Morehead. They are working with the Chamber on a fuel, our future workforce growth initiative. Later that day, I attended the AMC County Government 101. Matt Hillguard, the Government Relations Manager, gave an overview of AMC's working with the Legislature. We had presentation campaigning to govern, from campaigning to governing, sort of presenting the change that new commissioners are going to go through from the campaign to the serving. Also looked at county governance strategies and the balancing commissioner role with working family, and Commissioner Mojo did a great job, as did Commissioner Malter and Vetch and Sve, gave us a little food for thought on that. There'll be another, I think for the next two or three months, the 101 will be presented virtually, and then they're hoping, I think in May, maybe to get us into an actual training session. On Thursday, I virtually attended the Clay County Subs Abuse Committee, looked at some of the federal issues, got an update on that. We're looking at, within the last stimulus bill, there were changes to the PAC bill regarding interstate shipping of tobacco products. A whole lot of things that basically make it difficult for these things, for youth to buy tobacco products, including vaping, cigarettes, all of that over the internet. UPS, FedEx, and the postal service no longer ship tobacco because of some of the constraints that were put on through that. We do have a flavored tobacco bill that passed out of the House Committee and the Legislature at this point, that statewide would prohibit the sale of flavored tobaccos and menthol. Also touched briefly on the Winkler bill, the marijuana bill. There are some concerns with the legalization of marijuana bill, simply because, one of the concerns that were expressed was, there's no local authority for enforcement or regulation of this. This is all handled by the state. And local city and county governments could not pass ordinances to have any impact on whatever comes out of this bill. So it's worth watching. There's also a vaping ordinance that's underway, the process of it in Dilworth, and Morehead has got a flavored tobacco ordinance that they're going to develop in March. One of the things, I missed the last half of it because I had another meeting, but Beyond Smoke and Mirrors is a presentation that is currently being, that he showed us, basically looking at marijuana legislation. It's from SAM, which is Sensible Approach to Marijuana Minnesota. It is, they are promoting research-based legislation. Left that to go to the Legislative Conference, which has already been discussed, but I agree, Matthew Chase and his NACO presentation was a lot of things that are going to impact on this community we need to look at. The MA, you know, the chip eligibility in our juvenile facility, and getting other medical assistance into prisons and jails. Right now, they're talking, I think it's 30 days prior to release and then five years after. It'd be great to get that up and figure out a way to get this to where during the period of incarceration, these rights aren't taken away. Later that day, I had the AMC Public Safety Subcommittee. We looked at several things. One of the, MCIT presented liabilities and corrections, and liabilities that they're impacting because of officer behavior. Those are two of the biggest cost factors right now. One of the things, I think the behavioral health pod we've got in our correctional facility and some things that have been implemented, when you look at the fact that suicide is the biggest driver of cost right now within correctional facilities, that's something that I think our facility is a little bit ahead of. Pete Orpitt, Washington County Attorney, presented a discussion on bail in Minnesota. There is a movement to eliminate cash bail in a lot of instances. There's also fireworks bill, again, the same problem as with the Winkler bill. This would allow basically the fireworks that are sold in North Dakota to be sold in Minnesota, and they do not let local governance, our government come up with any ordinances to regulate sale or use. And last thing we had of the day was Paul Schnell from the DOC came to discuss pass-through spending and how the, for community services and community supervision, the funds are not keeping up with the increase in expenses. And he's indicated all components of the Department of Corrections have had budget cuts. There was a lot of flowback on that, a lot of discussion, and I understand his budget has been extended for the presentation with the Legislature because they went over and they had to end the day before the discussion was done. So there's, that's sort of a moving object right there. In the priorities that the AMC identified, there's a couple things that are going to impact on us. Community supervision funding is one of them. And there's also some movement to 911 telecommunications fees, the 95 cents that you get on your cell phone bill. That's going to sunset, and it needs to be re-implemented, and it needs to be re-implemented with some money going to the counties to offset these expenses. Another 911 telecommunications issue that's going is state standards and certification of telecommunications operators, in that our operation is in North Dakota. We really need to have a voice on how that's going to impact on us and the operators there. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. You reported that you were at the Greater Fargo-Moorhead Economic Development. That was an executive meeting, wasn't it?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure I didn't miss the regular meeting.
Nope, it was the executive meeting. I should have mentioned that.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Kaylee.
Wednesday, the 17th, I had that AMC County Government 101. That's been reported on plenty, and again, thank you to Jenny for participating in that. Also on Wednesday, I had the board meeting for the Historical and Cultural Society of Clay County. The museum has painted all of Heritage Hall and installed brand-new exhibit walls courtesy a grant from the Margaret A. Cargill Foundation. New lighting was installed last fall courtesy a grant from the Minnesota Historical Society. So it's nice and fresh. Everybody should go check it out. The May 6th annual meeting will be on Zoom, and the Clay County Heritage Award was discussed, and that will be going to the staff of the Vest Telemark Museum, who researched and wrote the book, The Red River Girl, as well as that exhibit. The book is available at the library. It's also available in the bookshop, and it's, it tells of Norwegian immigrants coming and settling here. There was a tremendous amount of research done, and it's a really interesting book and exhibit. I encourage everyone to check that out. Thursday, the 18th, was the AMC Legislative Conference. I think we've covered that enough. That afternoon, I also had the Health and Human Services Policy Committee. We had an update from Jan Malcolm with the Minnesota Department of Health, an update from Commissioner Jody Harpstead in the Department of Human Services, and an update from Matt Freeman, the Executive Director of the Minnesota Association of County Social Service Administrators. And he really talked about the prioritization of Health and Human Services waivers. That was a really great discussion. There was some good small group discussion, and we talked about the MA issue in there as well, and that the NACO proposal is some great first steps, but maybe once we can get that pushed through, we want to continue working on that some more. Also on Thursday, I filled in for Jenny on the MetroCog meeting. They discussed NDSU's Advanced Traffic Analysis Center. West Fargo is adding a couple intersections to that project. They wanted to change some wording in the tip amendment number two. So if there is a major decrease in a project, they have to have a public hearing and go through this whole formal process. So there was an incident where, just through an error, a project's total was doubled. It was just some bad numbers, some bad data, and so that project is going to be half of what they thought it was going to be, and they had to have a public hearing. So they just wanted to change the wording so a public hearing is no longer necessary when we're going to save a lot of money. We accepted the safety performance measures for North Dakota on the North Dakota side and the MinDOT on our side. Of note in that, several MinDOT bridge surfaces did not pass safety performance measures, and that was sort of a surprise to everybody, so looking forward to some projects to fix those surfaces. Friday, the 19th, we had our Early Childhood Initiative meeting. We discussed the early childhood screening, and I think it's really important that everybody understand that this is not your kindergarten screening. This is an early childhood screening, so families with children, three through those preschool years before they start kindergarten, really need to bring their children in to have their vision, hearing, and development assessed. And you don't need to worry about, you know, is my child not going to pass or something? That's not the point of this screening. The point is, if we have a child with some speech difficulties, we can get them some services before they get to kindergarten, so we can have a couple years to address those issues. This week, I actually brought two of my kids and had them assessed, and the assessments were different for each age, so it's based on where they are at right now when they get that assessment. And again, they checked their vision, they checked their hearing, they checked their development. You're able to connect with school health services and have any questions answered, have any concerns addressed. So there are April and June dates available for any families interested in having their children assessed. This assessment is required for kindergarten. And so there's always a big push in the early spring right now as kindergarten enrollment is starting to ramp up in our area. If you would like to enroll, you can go to the Morehead Community Ed page to sign up, or you can also give them a call to get a spot. At that meeting, we also discussed some of the needs and concerns of childcare providers in our area. You know, we saw in that update today that there has been a drop in childcare providers over the last few years, and one of the things that they talked about was the need for health insurance for childcare providers. There are lots of other groups that have like a pool, and we just don't have anything like that. So it'd be nice if we could see some sort of childcare provider health some sort of childcare provider health insurance pool being developed. The cost of healthcare and insurance, they cited as a reason for some of their colleagues being pushed out of that industry. Also on Friday, some leaders in our New American and Immigrant Community contacted me to have a discussion about how, a variety of concerns, but how they feel some of the funding for COVID relief hasn't trickled into their communities in the proportions that they feel it should have. And what some of those barriers might have been. So I would encourage anyone to contact us. We make our best decisions when we have information. So I know our phone numbers and our email addresses are all available on the county pages. Please feel free to contact your commissioners. We will have conversations about what some of those barriers are and how we can better serve our communities. On Monday, I also attended the LMHC Annual Meeting. That's been reported on plenty. They really have pivoted in remarkable ways to keep providing excellent service to our communities. Thank you so much to them for that. Right after that, I did also attend an AMC Futures Fast Presenters Coffee to hear from Roger Reinhardt, who was talking about building resiliency. And he talked about his service in Italy when he was deployed with the US Navy Reserve as part of a COVID response unit. Also, his time in the Minnesota Legislature and balancing serving the public with personal tragedies and challenges. So that was a great discussion with Commissioner colleagues. That concludes my report.
Thank you. And for myself, I had a Personal Issues Committee meeting last Tuesday, and that has been fully discussed regarding, we did action on a couple of those items with the sheriff this morning. Then on Thursday, I did not attend the general session, but I attended the policy meeting in the afternoon, AMC Transportation Policy Meeting. And we talked about broadband. We talked about funding for bridges. They're anticipating that there might be a small bonding bill proposed this year. We'll have to see how that. I did want to make a comment regarding MA. And the issue isn't that they lose their ability to have medical assistance. It's that's, once they're incarcerated, the financial obligation shifts from the federal government to the county. And that's what's extremely important to understand in this process, is that if they need medical, they're going to get it, right? I mean, Brian, you're well aware of that. They're going to get their medical needs, but a lot of it is, becomes, they no longer qualify for the federal MA. And then that becomes a burden on the county. And that's what we're trying to work with on to get resolved.
And maybe, Mr. Chair, I can add. I mean, some of the, I'm sure Chief Emmer is aware, but there are times where you have someone who has serious illness, they also commit a crime. And now, for instance, let's say they have kidney dialysis or they actually need transplant. I mean, that can be in the multimillion-dollar cost range. And all of a sudden, it's shifting to the county just by virtue of that person just having to also go and commit a burglary or some other. And maybe it's not even that high level of crime. Let's say it's a domestic assault. But they're now in jail with a certain amount of bail. They can't bail out. And then the question is, is the county going to take on a humongous cost when, I mean, still an important issue, still a crime, and it's still serious? But there's still a lot of issues that have to weigh out when, if we're going to all of a sudden be at the, on the hook for, say, a kidney transplant. And we've had that issue rise up before. So those are definitely issues that we have to continue to monitor and think about.
Thank you. I do want to bring up the issue regarding the CAREs and the New Americans. And I'm glad they reached out to you. But, you know, we had significant, and I mean significant, discussions about those areas within our CAREs meeting and through Rhonda and the group, and even in some instances through public health. There were a lot of suggestions brought up. And, you know, and I think we addressed, I think we addressed where the areas where the requests were coming from. You know, so if there's something beyond that that we're not aware of, it certainly will be good to know for future reference. I'm assuming that maybe this whole CAREs thing isn't done yet, you know, with what might still come in the future. But, so just so you're aware that there, that, through our committee, we've tried to deal with those areas of requests. So, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last Tuesday, I attended the PIC meeting that's been covered already. That afternoon, I had a discussion with MCIT on some ongoing legal matters. On the 17th, we had county management. We had an update from Kathy, a vaccine update. Again, verifying with the changes to FEMA, making sure that we continue to have our staff tracking their costs associated with the COVID pandemic. And we also touched on the rolling blockouts that were happening at that time. I participated in the AMC Legislative Session. That's been covered very well by the commissioners. I would note that the legislation that we talked about with funding and also the MA, there's some, it will probably be before the House this week. And so we'll get a better idea if that's going to move forward, at least to the Senate, in the same form. On the 18th, I also met with Kirk and solid waste, solid waste issues throughout last week. We also worked on the CM at Risk scoring. Really want to thank all the different interested parties. As Kirk said, we had eight businesses that really put together some good presentations as far as for consideration. And so I think that we're excited about the four that we'll be interviewing here within a week or so. Had some department head evaluation preparations that took part that day. Also, the following day, I met with Sheriff Empteen. You know, this board approved body cams towards the end of last year. And they recently were, have come to part of their daily job. Was able to watch just some examples of how those body cams have worked. I think certainly having the car cams were certainly a step forward. And I think that these video cameras are a very good addition, both for our citizens and also for our law enforcement. I think one of the interesting parts is law enforcement has been scrutinized a great deal for a variety of reasons. And one of the very things, great things that stood out as part of kind of reviewing these body cameras is the professionalism of our sheriff's department. And so that was very, very good to see. I had a number of conversations over the week with Derek LePointe, Darren Brooke. We met with him on Monday yesterday. We were at the Government Center. I think that we're looking to bring forward a date to this board. One of the things that we want to make sure as we transfer from the Government Center to the law enfor, or excuse me, from the courthouse to the Government Center, that we have a clear date in mind. So our citizens aren't going to have a day or two till when the Auditor Treasurer Planings or any recorder moves. But we'll have a solid date there. My understanding is MPS is working today to get the cable to the building. And so we'll begin some of those moves here very soon. Just wanted to touch base, our business relief, as I reported last week, our checks didn't go out last Wednesday. So businesses that successfully qualified should have received those. If they have not, please feel free to reach out to the Treasurer's Office, Auditor's Office. And for those businesses that are looking for their licensing fee equivalent for food, pool, and lodging, they should be coming out in the coming weeks. I did include, this morning on your desk, there's a letter to the governor that this board asked to write. Wrote this in conjunction with the chair. We did send that to Governor Walz, the Speaker of House, Melissa Hortman, Senate Majority Leader, Paul Gazelka, Senate Minority Leader, Susan Kent, House Majority Leader, Ryan Winkler, and also House Minority Leader Kurt Dout, along with our local legislators. That letter, again, was in regards to the Payment Protection Program. We did get a response from the governor's office, which I included in your packet. We also did receive information from Senator Ekin and his, I guess, willingness to work forward on this. And also, we did receive a notification this morning just prior to board from Representative Markort appreciating the letter. So we did, this last week, we also, with the changes to FEMA and the ability to cover new positions that are in regards to fighting COVID-19, we did put out a social media request for RPNs, RNs and LPNs to help with vaccination. I think Kathy and her staff have reported that it has created a lot of challenge for them. I'm pleased to report that by Monday morning, we had 26 interested parties. And so we're hoping to contact them here this week and look at how they can help us moving forward. And lastly, just wanted to touch base on broadband, following around with Mr. Zacharias. We do have the speed test initiative on our spotlight portion. So if our citizens want to find out additional information and take that test, that link is there along with some additional information. With that, I conclude my report.
Thank you, Steve. Brian, do you have anything?
Mr. Chair, thank you, Commissioners. I did want to provide one update. I talked to Steve some about this. I think as the board knows or remembers, there is a time period in the past, up through 2018, where the county attorney's office provided city contracting services, prosecution services for incorporated cities, which would have been Moorhead, Dilworth, Barnesville, Glendon, and Holly. That contract ended as of 2018. At that time, Moorhead set up their own city services. And then three of my attorneys ultimately transitioned over to the city and have been doing city services with them and for them. At that time, all of the other incorporated cities went over to them except for the City of Holly. The City of Holly at that time asked if we would continue to at least look at providing city prosecution services for them. We, at that time, did a two-year contract with the City of Holly. It came back around due for services. They asked for a contract. We sent them a contract that would have maintained the same cost that had been going on for the last two years. They ultimately chose to go with the City of Moorhead and be that last city that is now doing city contract services with the City of Moorhead and those other incorporated cities. I think it's a fine transition. I mean, I don't know that it matters one way or the other. I think it was fine to be able to come through and do those services for them for an extra two years. But really, the city contract services of doing all that work and those misdemeanors, gross misdemeanor work, it seems to fit within their profile anyway. So I just wanted to let, so the City of Holly had voted on that, I think, February 12th or 15th, whatever the date was. But the end of our contract is March 1st, or the end of February, March 1st will start with Moorhead. So just thought I'd give that update to the board.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is to go into closed session to discuss land development contracts. Have a motion to go to closed session by Commissioner Mojo?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Abinga. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What was the same? We'll give us a minute here to all we need. All right, we are back in session here. And the only remainder that we have is to adjourn, and we are adjourned.